I'm ready to deliver. I'm the citizen of all major cities. I understand all they want to do is let us know that we're here.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this season of the year, Father. May it be on our hearts the whole time, the real meaning of the season, Father, bless this gathering, uh, maybe do your business in a manner and see this in a manner. Um, but that's a thing that's good.
Okay, at this moment, we'll go into item number four, citizens' comment. If somebody's got something they want to address the council with, um, please come up to the front, state your name and your address, try to leave, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, the councilman, mayor. Again, I'm Net Johnson, and I came before the council, um, last month regarding Dr. Samuel Thomas. I had, um, proposed a portion of Highway twenty-seven, um, as a dedication to, um, Dr. Thomas, and I think we had, um, left it, um, that I had reached out to Senator Dugan, and, um, at, as part of the proposal, I just wanted to see if there was any update on that, sir.
Tammy, you want to address that?
Yeah, we, uh, our city engineer talked with Georgia DOT, and they said the proper protocol for this is to go through the local delegation, which would be Senator Dugan. Uh, they did indicate though, and realize this is at a staff level, so their, their decision is not final, but they did indicate that that section of road is already named after Martha Berry. So if the, if the desire is for a state highway, we need to find a section that's not already named that you feel would be appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'd be glad to work with you on that.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
How you doing? My name is Nicholas Todduke, mayor, city council. I'm the owner of Jones Towing. Um, I got a lot in Carrollton. It is less than five acres. The zoning law says that you're supposed to have five acres or more. The zoning law's supposed to state that you're supposed to have five acres or more, to own a towing company in the city of Carrollton. Um, I would like to see if we could go through and have something done so that I could, uh, get my business license. I've already called the, uh, fire marshal, it's been inspected by the fire marshal. Um, got all the, everything set up and ready. I was just wondering what would be the next matter of getting it done and taken care of.
Oh, I honestly don't know why the ordinance says five acres, but it does say a five acre minimum. Uh, if it's a desire of the council to reduce that, uh, I believe that section of the ordinance will have to go through the zoning boards, it'll take two months. But if you desire that we change that and reduce that acreage to five, we, I mean, below five, we can do that. What is the acreage of your property?
Uh, two and a half.
Okay, um, I honestly don't, and, uh, I honestly don't see a problem. Joel, do you see a problem with those yards being as small as two? I mean, I'm not opposed to it certainly, and if the council would like for us to do that, we could start that process, you would probably have approval by March.
By March, okay. Um, would I just have to come back here? Would I have to go through the?
No, we would, we would do that. If it's their desire to go forward with that, we would do that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I'm Marcel Roy. I live at two fifty-five Catherine Court, Carrollton, Georgia, and, um, I'm here on behalf of myself and fourteen other of my neighbors. Evelyn Boatright, age eighty-one, Cynthia Brown, Melanie Cook, age fifty-one, um, Melba Daniels, age seventy, Jean Davison, eighty-one, Sarah Huff, eighty-two, Stanley Cooper, Elizabeth Kramer, age forty-three, with an eleven-month-old, um, Ann McIlary, and Amy Valesquez, forty-one, husband forty-six, with a five-and-a-half-year-old. Once again, I cannot get a good night's sleep from the noise coming from Southwire and Echo Star or Magna. I, um, most of these neighbors that I mentioned bought homes in our neighborhood to retire in peace and quiet. For fourteen months now, I've been complaining about the noise, and I've been claiming, complaining to Southwire, and I went into county records and found out that actually, the Carrollton Payroll Development Authority is the lessor, and Southwire's a lessie with an option to purchase until 2031. So maybe the reason I can't get anything done is that why would you find yourselves as landlord for a company operating in violation of your own city ordinances, um, section fifty dash seventy-seven and section fifty dash twenty-seven that, um, says that it should be unlawful for odors of any nature whatsoever? I've contacted the EPA because there's a constant odor that happens at least twice a week, and I've been told by an engineer that it's the odor of plastic being melted, the resin particles that they use to coat the wire being melted. It's an awful odor. It permeates my home at night. It's in the morning when I go out, it's at night sometimes when I go out to walk. Um, and, um, I just am really frustrated that I keep being told that there's been sound studies, there's this excuse, that excuse. I was given a container of earplugs by Southwire, by Lakeisha Wilson. I've met with Ben Pascal, they fixed one of the offending machines, but the noise has continued. I'm, this is detrimental to my health and to my neighbor's health. And since you all are the landlords, acting landlords of fifty-one, fifty-two Columbia Drive, I would think that you would try and do something more to alleviate the noise that comes at night. Um, I noticed that there's a sign that says the use of air brakes is prohibited on Linda Lane, and I doubt you put those residents that were impacted by that noise through sound studies to determine whether or not they had legitimate reasons to be bothered by that, 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 coming down the hill. I have to listen to a sound that, living eight miles from I-20 and fifty-seven miles from the Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, sometimes sounds like I'm living on a expressway at rush hour or a runway at the airport. It's a horrible, high-pitched sound that does not cease, and, um, I just don't understand what the holdup is in getting either these companies fined and within the bounds of the city ordinances, or I don't, I just don't understand. And I've been in contact with the man that hired an attorney that, uh, threatened to shut down the reconstruction of I-85 because of nighttime noise, and if that's my only route, I don't really want that. I would like to just have peace and quiet. I don't see why a company can't be a good neighbor and a good employer in the community, and why those two things are mutually, can't be mutually, uh, in the same interest of the company. This is not going to solve my problem or my neighbor's problem. I came here and I had asked each one of these neighbors today verbally if I could use their name and their age. Um, they're not interested in money. They want to live in their homes peacefully at night. Our own city ordinance say that we should be, um, fining these companies when they violate my ability to have a good night's sleep. So, and there, I, I looked in records that CBS and Sony, when they built this plant back, it became operational as far as records go, twenty-eight years ago in nineteen eighty-nine, and Southwire is still making use of cooling towers that are falling apart, that have fans on the top, that we're at the level of the top of these units when I've got, driven down there, um, you can't really hear it at ground level. I, last night alone, I got a reading of sixty-seven point one DBs right behind my bedroom window, and I'd like to know if any of you could sleep with that kind of constant noise. And this is not a noise that happens like a train horn or the train going by, this is not a noise that happens by a, a car with the, with mufflers. This is a constant, incessant noise that does not end, and when daytime comes, the only reason you don't hear it as loud is because other noises, the ambient noise of the neighborhood and goings-on, kind of make it seem less, but it's, it's impairing my neighbor and my health, and I don't think that I should have to endure this when I've been complaining in one form or another to one person or another for over fourteen months. And I don't know why you want to keep spending money conducting surveys when, right after Yachio was built, that was not the source of the noise, but as soon as Southwire booted up and started, uh, running, the noise was evident. And I can go back in my notes, which I've, um, given to Ben Pascal at Southwire and, um, Mr. Skinner, that I've taken digital recordings that are, they're, the nation, the World Health Organization says the, I shouldn't be having to endure noise decibels over fifty-five is detrimental to the health of any individual, and we're nightly over sixty decibels.
Ma'am, we hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
And if I may, uh, comment after you, um, I would like to say too, that I've clocked, uh, thousands of hours, and I do mean thousands of hours, of meeting with Southwire, meeting with city staff, and trying to resolve the issue of noise in that neighborhood. Um, I'm exasperated and annoyed beyond belief. I've tried everything. I met with Southwire two weeks ago, they told me they were working on, um, a piece that they were going to bring here, um, as a solution to present to the city council, and I'm awaiting to hear from Southwire, and, uh, and I hope they come to the next meeting. I appreciate all the goodwill that Southwire and other companies have done, and, uh, and I hope they continue to do goodwill in our community to help people all around the world, and certainly all around this country. But there's one name that you forgot to add to that list, and that is my name, because I also live in that neighborhood, and I'm forty-five years old, so please add my name to whatever that is that you have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Heron, I'm with Southwire.
Hey, Jeff.
How you doing?
Good to see you.
So, we take seriously any time we have a report or a, uh, input from the community about any of our factories, about anything that we might be involved in. So, uh, it is true that we've been working closely with the residents in the community for a number of months, and it is more than a year. Uh, we, when we first got a report that we had a sound issue or a noise issue in the neighborhood, we went in and did some studies of our own to determine exactly what it was and what it might be coming from. We found a piece of equipment that was noisier than we thought it should be, we put in a temporary system around it, and then we built, ultimately built a building and closed that piece of equipment and put acoustical information, insulation around it so that we could try and reduce the noise level. And each time we would do one of these overhauls or improvements around a piece of equipment, we would take additional numbers, and it did in fact lower the DB rating, uh, at the property line. But we continue to get feedback. We thought that was going to be the issue, we, and, and we would have it resolved, so, but it wasn't. So we, we got information in some cases from Councilman Byrd, in other cases from Ms. Roy and others, and so we continue to, each time we would get that feedback, try and correlate what was happening at the factory. And some days, we would get information that the, the sound levels were very good, and what was happening at the factory was exactly what happened the day before and the day prior to that. In other cases, we would get information that the noise was particularly bad, so we would take that information and try and correlate it. And there would be no big change. We'd go back and look at whether or not we had additional equipment on loan, do we have contractors employed, were we running processes that we didn't normally run, and the short answer was, we never could correlate any of the activities at the plant that related to these instances or the feedback we're getting from the community. So ultimately, we did find, and I think we were working with Councilman Byrd, we found a couple of fans on the back of the building, uh, we went ahead and made a, replaced those. We had some ventilation fans above the main part of the building that were running at different RPM range. So we went in and we harmonized those to get them all running the same speed. That seemed to have a positive impact, and we've done noise studies at the property line, and we're below fifty DB at the property line. So we begin to believe we were not the root cause of the noise issue in the community. What convinced us we were not the root cause of the noise issue in the community is we got a, a correspondent that said things have been really good for three days, and this was in, in October. And then on, uh, October, I think it was the fourteenth or the fifteenth, we shut the plant down for safety meetings. So while the plant was down, we got a report that the noise was unbearable. We said, okay, we can't correlate anything, but here at a time when the noise should be as good as it's ever been, we're getting complaints, so it's starting to tell us, we're not the root cause of this noise issue in the community. So then at the end of October, we were shut down to do our inventory, do a month in inventory, and October every year, we'd count everything. So we were down. We got a similar correspondence on that morning that it was terrible, and we said, okay, it can't be us, we're not even running today. So there, there is a problem. I believe when the residents tell us there's a problem, we believe it. So we're not here to question whether or not there's a problem. The issue for us is, we're not the root cause of the problem. I do think that the, or, noise ordinance that we currently have in Carrollton is very difficult for a compliance officer to go out and determine whether or not, uh, there's a violation. So Southwire would encourage the council to put together a noise ordinance that would give them something measurable so that a compliance officer could go out and actually do a field test and determine whether or not the factories or the restaurants or the concert or whatever it is is in compliance, so that they could do their work. We think it'd be good for the community, uh, we think it'd be good for industry, so we fully support that, and, uh, anything we can do to help the council, uh, to come up with that, we'd be glad to do that. Thank you.
Uh, I would like to say, I encourage you to, uh, assist the council, uh, in doing that, Jeff, and also, um, I'd like to ask Chuck Connolly, our, and I'm sorry about my voice today, but I'd like to ask Chuck Connolly, our city attorney, to, to inform us on where we stand on developing that ordinance, and, uh, also, who is going to combat or, um, monitor the noises? I can't do it anymore. I can't stay up till five o'clock in the morning anymore, meeting with y'all. We've had three, four, five, six o'clock in the morning meetings that last three or four hours, and I have to go to work the next day, and I'm a zombie. I'm to the point where I can't take it anymore. So if I have, and I'll do it, I'll do it, but those codes officers that we pay every year that I, I voted on the budget for, I think they should be fired if I have to continue to do it, because I deserve a salary, okay? I'm serious too about that, because I don't get paid to work eight, ten, twelve, fourteen hours a day chasing sounds. So something has to be done up here, and I do, I would like to see this on the next, um, agenda for January, and I move right now, and I know I have to have another council member to, uh, move with me to have this put on the agenda. Thank you very much, Jeff, and thank you to everybody at Southwire too, because I think it means a lot that you guys are willing to stay up with me all night to chase these sounds with walkie-talkies and compasses and going through the woods and being chased by a bear or whatever that was, that we were chased by the other day. So, uh, I thank y'all for that. I thank you for being willing to work with us, and Marcel, I thank you for your hard work too, but we shouldn't have to be up all night long playing cat and mouse and chase the way we've been doing, and then expect to come to work and run the city. There's absolutely no way I can do it. Again, if I have to do it, which I'm willing to do, because I'm a machine, I like staying up all night, I don't mind, I'll do it. If I do it, somebody's gonna get fired. I'm just saying, all right? Thank you. So Chuck, could you address that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Um, one of the things I think everybody agrees with is that our noise ordinance is outdated. Uh, it's been on the books since at least nineteen seventy-five, uh, and probably predates even nineteen seventy-five, and the, the primary problem with our noise ordinance is that it does not have a quantitative noise standard. It speaks more in terms of qualitative, you know, the noise, and I'm just summarizing, but the noise shouldn't be bad, okay? Well, that's not much of a standard for either the people that are living in the communities or frankly for industry to know what they're supposed to meet. And, and I will say, before we take too much criticism for that, I, I've looked at a number of different jurisdictions comparable to ours, and a lot of them have the same noise ordinance that we have, and this will come as no surprise to you, but a lot of times what happens is model ordinances get prepared and many different cities adopt them, and they stay on the books forever, and sometimes you reach a point where they no longer make sense. There are, however, some jurisdictions that have newer noise ordinances that provide for a, um, quantitative standard, which is measured typically at the, at the property line of the receiving property, uh, and that is something that's being looked at, and Councilman Byrd, um, I anticipate that at the January meeting, uh, a new noise ordinance will be, um, presented to you guys for consideration. Just one point of clarification, I just want to make sure everybody understands, the Carrollton Payroll Development Authority and the city of Carrollton are not the same thing. Uh, they are two separate legal entities, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that, um, that if the Carrollton Payroll Development Authority owns a piece of property and leases it to someone, that is not the same thing as the city of Carrollton owning a piece of property and, and leasing it to someone. They are separate and distinct legal entities with different boards and, and different legislation that creates them. So I just want to make sure that we all understand that. Um, I, I don't know about the, the person that you mentioned, I've not heard that person's name before, but, uh, the mayor, the, the board is comprised, the Carrollton Payroll Development Authority Board is comprised of five individuals, two of whom sit by virtue of their office, the mayor of Carrollton being one, so Mayor Hollingsworth is now on the board, and also the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and then there are three members that are appointed to the board. There, there is a person that sits on the mayor and city council who also sits on the Carrollton Payroll Development Authority Board, yes ma'am.
Is there anyone else?
I would like to say thank you, Chuck, and thank you to Marcel, and thank you Jeff, and everybody else. Ashley, I see you back there, and everybody else from Southwire, so thank you.
Item number five, minutes, um, have a motion we adopt minutes from last month's meeting, November sixth.
Can I make a motion to adopt?
A motion to adopt. Second. Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Item number six, mayor and council announcements.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, of the council and to our citizens as well, I would like to thank everyone who's involved in the parade, I was just now in it, and, uh, that parade route is really neat, and I think it's, uh, a lot of fun, and there were lots of happy people out there, so thanks to everyone who was involved in organizing the parade, still involved in it right now and it's happening as we speak, right behind us. And also, uh, I would like to thank the city as well for their work on, and the council as well, and the mayor for, uh, the work over on Presbyterian Avenue. I know we have some frustrated citizens who are ready for that work to, uh, conclude, but, uh, I must say, um, I've experienced it myself, and things are going much smoother now, and I think it's looking pretty good, and I really like the, la, I can never say the name of the Italian relucia tutorial, I like that area a lot, and it's looking really good, and those guys are working really hard. Um, I would like to ask Joe Richards to stand at this time, if you don't mind, our police chief. Joe Richards worked like a Hebrew slave on Saturday to help me make sure that we had kids out at the West Carrollton Recreation Center to participate in our, I think it's the fourth or fifth, fourth annual, um, we used to call it Scared Straight, but now we call it Real Talk, and we had, uh, inmates come out from our prison, and I'm sure that was a huge undertaking to get them there. One of the inmates had a mom drive in from, what state, Maryland? Maryland, just to see her son. They told very, very powerful stories. We had other people there who have been incarcerated before, now they've turned their lives around, so we were able to show both ends of the spectrum, and we wound up probably having about forty kids, so, about forty-five kids, and their parents come out, so it was a fantastic event. Uh, we fed them, gave them drinks, Walmart gave bicycles, video games, everybody went home with a fidget spinner, uh, footballs, you name it. So I would like to thank Joe and his staff and, uh, the city as well for backing that project, and I hope we can do that more often. Too bad we had it the day they had that. What was the football game that was on though? I'm serious, I'm not playing, but thank you. I don't like football. I'll say, so, yeah, that game.
I'll say, so yeah, that game. Also, I would like to announce too, that I'm starting a brand-new program along with a couple of people in the community, it's called Fix It. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna work with fatherless children to teach them how to change tires, change oil, cut grass, Kent, you, we'll probably need your help, because I don't know how to do that stuff, and mow lawns, et cetera. And that program starts at Legends West in the parking lot on December fifteenth at 5:30, and we have a lot of people behind us on that project, so we look forward to it. That's all I have. Oh, and Merry Christmas to all our citizens. I'm, I'm so sorry, and I forgot to say thank you to everybody who voted me back in office. Again, I look forward to working very, very hard with each and every one of you, and if you ever for one second feel that you're not loved, please know that I really do love you. Thank you.
My only public comment is Merry Christmas to our department heads, and Happy New Year. I probably won't get to, I will not see y'all probably till January. Thank you for your hard work over this last calendar year, and thank y'all, and Merry Christmas to everybody else.
Just want to say big thanks to everybody that worked so hard on rescheduling the parade to the new date. I know that was a lot of work, and I know that you guys always do a fantastic job, so thank you to everybody that worked on that. And again, I know I've said it to a lot of people, but thank you for the votes in helping me get reelected as well, to council members up here that did give me a call of congratulations, and thank you so much for your support. That's it.
Just got a few things, kind of like met, and I won't see a lot of y'all again till the end of the year, so happy holidays. And thanks for everybody, everybody's done. I've been getting a lot of great reports on Mike Green's department, ours, pickups and yards, and everybody's getting up leaves, and y'all doing a real good job, staying on top of all of that. Everybody's real pleased. I can't, I don't think I've had any complaints from anybody this month. I can't say anything good, and it's great. But happy holidays.
Let's have a couple of quick things. One, this is one of those rare years where New Year's Eve is gonna fall on a Sunday, and alcohol sales are an issue. There is literally no way to change that ordinance for having alcohol sales after Sunday at midnight. We can choose not to issue citations, that's about the best we can do. If you object to that, please say so, otherwise I'm gonna direct the police to try to keep everybody safe and not issue any citations after that point. Our ordinance is very clear that we can't sell alcohol on Christmas Day. So unless there's an objection to that, that's the way we will proceed. I'd also like to thank all the department heads and all the employees, your level of work is just amazing. I had a judge call me a couple of weeks ago and say that they, they laughed that if they left a dead elephant on the street, the city would get it up. I said, yeah, and we'd find a way to make money on it. So I'm very proud of what these people do. We got the best fire department, best police department, best public works, excellent parks and rec, obviously excellent water system, and so just very proud of everybody, appreciate all the work they do, and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Moving on to item numbers, item number eight. Approve of agenda items for consideration?
Yes.
You hand that. There was one addition, the next for those folks you'd like to.
Okay, yes, sir. I move, we accept the current agenda with the addendum items as mentioned by city manager Tim Grizzard.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Rory, certificates of recognition, 2017 CRPA 14 under volleyball champions.
All right. Big congratulations to the 14 and under girls volleyball championship team and our Parks and Recreation. Could we get a round of applause for that? I'd like to read the certificate of recognition. What I'll do is, I'll read the whole thing, and then I'll call up each person, and if you can all just kind of come up at the same time, we'll pass out the recognition, the certificates after that. From the office of Mayor Carrollton, Georgia, dated December fourth, 2017. It is with great pleasure and tremendous pride that the mayor and council of the City of Carrollton express our sincere congratulations to the Carrollton Parks and Recreation 14 and Under Girls Volleyball Team for winning the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association State Championship in Volleyball on November eleventh, 2017. These players and coaches are to be commended for a long, successful season, and we are proud of the record you've earned with dedication, enthusiasm, and willingness to work hard, as well as the fine publicity you've brought our community. Therefore, we are pleased to publicly commend the Carrollton Parks and Recreation 14 and Under Girls Volleyball Team for these fine efforts, and present this certificate of recognition to each team member as an expression of the affection and admiration from the mayor and council and all the citizens of the City of Carrollton, Georgia. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal to be affixed, Mayor Walt Hollingsworth, date December fourth, 2017. And first name, Katie Alred.
Peter, can you come up here and give us a hand with this, please?
And forgive me if I mispronounce anybody's name, Charlotte Melanese. Myla Land. Maggie Miles. Blakely Young. And coaches Samantha P V, Emily Robison, and Monica Craig.
and oh, never losing a single set, and this was back-to-back state champion seasons for them, so I'm proud of all of them. So put your hands together one more time for these ladies. They represented the City of Carrollton very well.
Well, Peter, while you're here, we're gonna do recognition of 2017 GRPA Volunteer Awards.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is one of the best years our Parks and Recreation Department has had with the Georgia Recreation and Park Association. Without dedicated staff and the Recreation Commission, the hundreds of volunteers that work for us on an annual basis, part-time employee, a city manager that supports us and a mayor and council, who understand that quality of life is an important part of community success, none of this would have been possible, so thank you to all of you guys. To put all this in perspective to everybody out here tonight, on the average, we typically win two or three awards each year, as we compete with other agencies all over the state. This year, we brought home nine awards for our Carrollton community, and the first award I'll speak on tonight is one of our four Volunteers of the Year awards. The first one tonight will be Ms. Laura Richards. And if I can have Kent Johnston go ahead and come up here too, please, I would appreciate it up front. She was recognized for her efforts for having a lasting positive feedback on Parks and Recreation in the state of Georgia for the Carrollton Green Belt. The eighteen-mile linear park encircles the City of Carrollton, is the largest green space and greenway conservation project ever undertaken in our community. Without her leadership and vision, this project would have taken years to accomplish. Thank you, Laura, for your gift, and what a wonderful legacy you've established in our town. And obviously, she couldn't be here tonight, but Kent, if you'll stand up here, please, I sure would appreciate it. Kent was also heavily involved, and I'm about to go through a few others that were heavily involved as well. The second award that our department won this year was the GRPA Outstanding Project Award, presented to Mr. Kent Johnston for his work on the Carrollton Green Belt. This award is presented not only to Kent and his staff, but to everyone that plan helped and implemented our Carrollton Green Belt. Thank you to Laura Richards, our city staff, city manager Tim Grizzard, Erica Studdard, Tommy Holland, the police and fire department, John Bass, the PATH Foundation, and the Community Foundation as well, and city attorney Chuck Connolly. Thank you all to you guys too, as well. Our third award that we won this year, this gentleman won it not only on the district level, but he also won it on the state level, Mr. Gerald Byrd. He won the Georgia Recreation and Park Association Volunteer of the Year for his outstanding work on Legends West Park. That started out as a dream and became a reality this past year with the completion of the park in the West Carrollton community. Hands down, it's one of the most beautiful parks in our community, and one we can all be proud of in our town. Thank you for your commitment, Gerald, to the Parks and Recreation and to our community. We appreciate it. Our next Volunteer of the Year award goes to Dr. Eric Hine. This man right here wore me out for the last five years. He won the Georgia Recreation and Park Association Volunteer of the Year for his tireless work on the eighteen-hole disc golf course at Hobbs Park. His dedication to this project from start to finish has wired Carrollton community as the number-one ranked disc golf course in the state of Georgia. This was a true partnership between private citizens and public recreation to produce a fantastic amenity for people to enjoy for years to come in our Carrollton community. Thank you. Our next Volunteer of the Year award goes to Ms. Tanya Pittman, if you can come up here as well, please. Tanya is one of our newest Parks and Recreation Commission members. She won the Georgia Recreation and Park Association Volunteer of the Year for her outstanding leadership with our Carrollton Flexet Gymnastics Team as a parent volunteer. The children make our Carrollton Flexets successful, but if we did not have parents like Tanya volunteering her time, twenty-four hours a day at those gymnastics meets, we would not be able to host these high-caliber meets and have such a well-run volunteer-parent organization. Thank you for your dedication to our coaches and children in the gymnastics program. Ms. Stacy Kine won the Georgia Recreation and Park Association Outstanding Program Award for her gymnastics classes that have almost doubled over the last two years. Stacy spends numerous hours training her staff to provide a safe and quality gymnastics program. The program currently has over two hundred registered gymnasts that come through East Carrollton Gymnastics Center every six weeks. Ms. Dottie Morton couldn't be here tonight. She won the Georgia Recreation and Park Association Outstanding Special Event Award. She's actually at the parade for the Carrollton Fall Festival that department does in collaboration with the Main Street each year. This partnership has allowed both departments to combine resources and offer more to the citizens of Carrollton. The event is for children ages zero to twelve, and allows children a safe and fun Halloween event. And the one award that I'm really most proud of this year for our department is the Agency of the Year. If I can have any of our staff, Parks and Recreation commissioners that are here, please come forward as well. The Carrollton Parks and Recreation Department won the coveted Agency of the Year award for the Georgia Recreation and Park Association. This award is voted on by park and recreation professionals, and highlights our major accomplishments, outstanding programs offered, and the significant contributions an agency makes to its community. As our mayor Walt Hollingsworth stated recently, our Parks and Recreation staff is second to none, and they have been successful for a long time. The quality of life they provide for our community is what most towns our size wish they had. We continue to be proud of them and all that they do for our Carrollton community. Congratulations, guys, you guys deserve it. And thank you, everyone in the community, for all your support. We could not do it without all the hundreds of volunteers that we have, and as you see, we are very, very proud of our volunteers. And I would like, Tommy, you to come forward, please, if you don't mind, Joel Richards, Jimmy Bearden, come on up, Erica, oh yeah, come on, Erica. You were part of that green belt. Jim Triplett, come on up. Don't try to hide, come on. He wrote the checks. Thank you to all you guys.
Look at Johnson, you should be up there.
Just push the button.
Just push the button.
Look through here. There's nothing on there, it's black.
Black camera.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm used to it, like showing up right there. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Gerald, you have recognition you want to do?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Alejandra Stack. If you could please stand where you are. This is from the office of the mayor of Carrollton, Georgia. It's a certificate of recognition presented to Alejandra Stack, local up-and-coming journalist and reporter. It is with great pleasure and tremendous pride that the mayor and council of the City of Carrollton express our sincere congratulations to Alejandra Stack for her achievements in the journalism industry. Alejandra began her journey into journalism when she was discovered there were hardly ever, hardly ever, reported stories on kids. Alejandra sprang into action by writing stories, networking, and highlighting kids she had met through various avenues, including those she had met while performing activism work and participating in sports. Alejandra realized that her purpose was to help other kids see that they are never too young to achieve great things. At the age of eleven, Alejandra used money she had earned from a Cartoon Network acting job to start her own magazine for kids, Kids Newsmaker. Alejandra is well-known on special, on social media as Ally in Action, with numerous followers on Facebook and Twitter. Alejandra serves as not only the founder of Kids Newsmaker magazine, but as a reporter and the CEO of the magazine. Alejandra. Alejandra realized that her purpose was to help other kids see that they are never too young to achieve great things. At the age of 11, Alejandra used money she had earned from a Cartoon Network acting job to start her own magazine for kids, Kids Newsmaker. Alejandra is well-known on social media as Allian Action, with numerous followers on Facebook and Twitter. Alejandra serves as not only the founder of Kids Newsmaker Magazine, but as a reporter and the CEO of the magazine. Alejandra was recently recognized by the Bahamas Press Club Media Award for 2017 for her initiatives and is to be commended for her enthusiasm and willingness to work hard on researching, documenting, writing, and presenting the news in an honest, ethical, and unbiased way. We encourage her to keep these valuable characteristics as she pursues her career in journalism. Therefore, we are pleased to publicly commend Alejandra Stack for the fine publicity she has brought to the city of Carrollton and present to Alejandra this certificate of recognition as an expression of the affection and admiration from the Mayor and Council and all the citizens of the city of Carrollton, Georgia. In witness thereof, I hereby to set my hand and cause the seal to be affixed this fourth day of December 2017, Gerald Byrd, Mayor Pro Tem, and Walt Hollingsworth, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, Ms. Alejandra Stack. Could you come up? All right. Now, we're going to Hollywood, all right? We have a celebrity in the room. His name is Mr. Caleb Thomas. Caleb, could you please stand at this time? This is from the Office of the Mayor as well, Carrollton, Georgia. Certificate of Recognition presented to Caleb Thomas, local rising star. It is with great pleasure and tremendous pride that the Mayor and Council of the City of Carrollton express our sincere congratulations to Caleb Thomas for his achievements in television and the motion picture industry. Caleb has aspired to become an actor since the age of four and began attending acting classes at the age of seven. Caleb was successful in obtaining roles in movies, including The Internship, the movie Selma, which I think Oprah Winfrey was there with you. And A Question of Faith, which was just now in our movie theater, and I went to see it twice at the Carrollton Stadium Cinemas. Great movie. I cried both times. Caleb also starred in a Toys R Us commercial and has recently booked the action hero television series Black Lightning to be aired on Channel 69. Caleb is to be commended for his initiative, enthusiasm, and willingness to work hard on video productions as he continues to pursue his acting career. Therefore, we are pleased to publicly commend Caleb Thomas for the fine publicity he has brought to the city of Carrollton and present to Caleb this certificate of recognition as an expression of the affection and admiration from the Mayor and Council and all the citizens of this great city. In witness thereof, I hereby to set my seal and cause this seal to be affixed this fourth day of December 2017, Gerald Byrd, Mayor Pro Tem, Walt Hollingsworth, Mayor, Caleb. Come on up. So good to see you, Caleb, in person. Good to see you. Yeah, I'm gonna put the microphone back.
Anybody wants to slide out the door? Now we get into the meat, potatoes of the meat, if y'all want to just hang around or if you're welcome to leave. Somebody might have homework that need to get done tonight. Item number four, rezoning request. Rezone 9.93 acres from C2 General Commercial to C3 Neighborhood Commercial with Senior Housing Floating Zone. Location 170 Highway 113. Advocate CRN Development LLC on behalf of property owner Carston Development LLC. Ms. Studdard.
Thank you. The fourth item on your agenda was reviewed by the Planning Commission in November, and they recommended approval of the rezoning request by CRN Development with the following conditions. And there's several of these, but I'm gonna go through these line item by line item. Number one, sidewalks may be constructed as shown in the binding site plan. You should have received that in your packet. The site plan and architectural elevations are binding to the approval of the zoning. Number three, an increase in the allowable density from 10 units per acre to 10.3 units per acre. The senior housing floating zone currently allows 10 units per acre. I think when they got their most current survey back, it was a little less acres than what they had originally intended, so they just asked for that extra density bump of .3 units per acre. The cemetery located at the southwestern boundary is to be preserved and protected. Flexibility is given to the number of parking spots needed with the results of a parking assessment. After the Planning Commission meeting, they did have a parking assessment completed that showed that they would be able to reduce the number of parking. This particular type of use, senior housing, has an industry standard that is put out by the Urban Land Institute, and they asked basically for permission to reduce the required number from a traditional multifamily. The trees that are along the south property line adjacent to 160 Highway 113 are to remain, and I'm gonna actually point at that. That's along the Aldright tract. There's a stand of hardwoods that are kind of right along that property line, and the Planning Commission asked that none of those be cut down. The facade of the back of the building facing Highway 113 shall contain features to appear as a building front. The building is situated, there's two buildings. One of the buildings situated along Highway 113 will be basically, the building will be oriented towards the parking lot that's behind the building, which we like, but we also want the building frontage along 113 to look as though it's a front, so we're not looking at the back of the structure. A buffer consisting of eight-to-10-foot evergreens, non-Leland Cypress evergreens, will be planted along the property line separating the commercial from the residential on the southern portion of the property. This particular, this is basically the same property line that we're talking about. The Planning Commission also recommended, in addition to the stand of trees that are there, that they plant additional evergreen trees on that same tract. The Planning Commission reviewed this request, and they voted unanimously nine to zero to approve it. If you have any questions, I'm available. You should have received the parking study and, I think, a market study in your packets. Both of those came out after the Planning Commission meeting.
Erica, somewhat related, unrelated, is the neighborhood next to it. I know they were having a lot of issues. Tim, you might remember when they used to come to us a lot.
So, do you mean answer?
Trash and all the...
I'll tell you that the neighborhood's been cleaned up quite a bit. I don't know if it's under new property management. This is a duplex neighborhood here known as Wisteria. There are a lot of issues with this. This particular neighborhood was developed partially, and I think it was probably a victim of the economy bust, the bubble bust. And when things went into foreclosure, basically, the outcome is the streets are privately owned. They're inadequate. They're substandard. They're too narrow. But they're also privately owned by an entity that doesn't own any of the units. So it's a very complicated mess, and we currently haven't been presented with a solution by any either property owners or developers on that. So that's just kind of sitting, but it is occupied, and I think they're doing a little better job keeping it. At least when I went in over the last month or so reviewing this request, it looked nicer and cleaner.
That is a very strong group of owners out there. I don't know that they have a formal POA, but there's a group of ladies that police that place very strongly. So the ownership structure is the same as Bristol Lakes, but we don't have the problems there that we have at Bristol Lakes just because some, there are a number of residents that police the neighborhood very strictly.
And I wanted to ask Rory, I used to always receive complaints about the neighborhood and the happenings. Have you received any about trash or?
Yeah, largely, the complaints I've received have been about the overgrowing stuff just on this property that they're looking to develop. I have a question about the streets that are within this. Are those city-owned streets, the North Winds Connector, Wisteria Lane?
So yes, if you look at the location map, both of those streets are city-owned, and those are not substandard. Those actually meet our requirements right now. It's just the streets within that neighborhood that are substandard.
I got a few more questions. What other, I know the senior housing, there's a huge demand for that in our community. What other senior housing communities exist? I know Park Place, what other ones are there?
There's Carrollton Club on Cedar Street, and Park Place are both similar to this. They are affordable housing products. Chick is out of town. Charles Griffin with the Housing Authority, he probably could answer. I know those two are restricted, age-restricted and income-restricted.
And do you know what sort of outdoor amenities exist at those locations?
I can tell you, every time I see Sandra, she wants us to work on some sidewalks along that area so her residents can walk. She's not here that I know of, so I don't know. I know at Park Place, just from personal anecdotal experience, because we looked at that for one of my relatives, they have an indoor kind of clubroom. They have a computer room. They have an area where you can have kind of birthday parties where it's not inside the apartments. The, but it really is primarily indoor. I'm not real sure how much the residents get out, and you know, some of them drive. Not all of them do. They did a study to kind of show how many, what percentage typically with a development like this do have cars and do drive. But that's what I'm aware of just from visiting Park Place.
Do you know what that percentage of drivers versus non-drivers are?
Was it 80%? 80%?
80% drivers? Is that correct? Okay. So 20% would need pedestrian access to that space.
They would be pedestrians, or they would have someone drive them, correct?
Transportation.
They're no longer driving.
So, okay, I got a few more, I'm sorry. What outdoor amenities, because I saw in some of the pictures, there were some rocking chairs next to air conditioning units. But outside of that, I think that was in the Rome photo, or the, in the photo of the example that was provided that was in Rome, there was some, the outdoor amenities on there looked like there was rocking chairs next to. So what is planned for this?
Currently, as shown, they're doing indoor amenities. They're doing kind of a clubroom. I can, I think the applicant can answer those questions. Same thing, I think it'll have a computer room similar to what you see at Park Place, where they've got kind of a gathering room, cards. I'm not sure what kind of planned activities that they do around that space. In other words, I don't know if they have card night or game night or anything like that. The applicant can answer those questions.
They do at Park Place, they do have special activities, because I'm one of them. I teach art there. I go over there and teach art for free, so they do have those amenities. And Rory, what I did with Park Place was I worked with them on the amenities that they have over there because I wanted garden boxes in around some of the apartments. So those seniors who are accustomed to having a little garden can have a little space to work into. They built some brick container gardens all around the place, and gazebos as well, so.
Yeah, I'm just seeing the lack of functional exterior sort of spaces on this plan. But that sounds like an awesome way to provide something like that. And then the average income, it is at affordable rate, right?
It is.
So, do we know what the average income level is of? Up to, you said? Okay. Okay, okay. And has there been an impact study for traffic onto 27 from that area?
There has not.
When was the last time, because I know that's already a kind of a bad street where Subway is to getting onto 27? I was just wondering if, Tommy, do you know what GDOT, when was the last time it was looked at? And does it plan on, is there any plans?
Rory, our wards butched one another in that spot, and I wondered if there's ever a chance of there being a light put right there. You know, because it is getting, I mean, it's only gonna make it worse, and that Subway and all that, it's impossible to get.
Yeah, if we're looking at 80% more, that's looking at 80 more cars living right there.
Times two in some cases, or three.
Come on, if you've got some, if you can help answer this, yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I'm Tony Derma. I represent the owner of this property. We had looked at trying to get a better intersection there, not a right-in, right-out. Did have a discussion with the DOT, and they said due to Old Bremen Road, the way this comes in, that they were not going to allow a light or a regular intersection other than a right-in, right-out. That's as far as I got with them, so there may be.
So what we're gonna get stuck with is an overload on 113. And it's already pretty overloaded now.
I mean, what's an overload, though?
I mean, traffic's backed up to the EMC in the mornings trying to get onto 27. In the afternoon, it's backed up to Brandy Chase trying to get to the bypass. So the DOT told you no changes there.
Now, that was a year or so back.
Changes being traffic lights?
Yeah, adding a light. They said the way that Old Bremen Road comes in was their biggest concern. The way Old Bremen Road, if you look on this right, it comes in at an angle, and there may be a way to rework that intersection. I don't know that.
And I'm assuming then, Tommy, there probably wouldn't be a light on 113 at the other side either. It's too close to 27 light?
Any more questions, guys?
I just want to make the point, if there's a desire for a light, we need to make sure the developer pays for that. That signal will be close to $200,000, and then that won't include any roadwork that may be needed to support it. On either end, whether 113 or 27, it'll be close to $200,000, I would think, wouldn't you, Tommy? And again, that wouldn't do the roadwork associated with it.
Yeah, I just want to say, just to clarify, I'm all for senior livings, all for affordable-rate housing to make sure that people can have a place to live, but I want to make sure it is in the best place for them to have connections into town, and I don't want the city then to have to eat those sorts of costs later to be able to install, to make sure that it is an actual safe sort of space. But I think there, not to speak out of turn, are there a few people here for and against?
Yeah, we'll get to them in a minute.
Sorry, yeah, I'm speaking out of turn.
Anybody want to speak for or against this motion? Yes, ma'am, please come to, let me, you're a developer, come on up first. You may answer some questions, I'm sorry.
Mayor, Council, thank you. My name is Thomas Ward, and I'm with CRN Development. And this proposed project is 102 units. It is affordable housing. And this proposed project is 102 units. It is affordable housing. It's just like Park. And so, and it's designed with security for the senior citizen, as well as activities indoors. There is an outdoor picnic area, when you, if you look at the site plan, there is an outdoor picnic area that we have outside. And we have done the gardens outside as well. At many of them, one of the issues that you have there, they have to be handicap accessible. That's a very difficult thing to build, is a garden that's totally handicap accessible. But it can be done, but they're fairly expensive, but we could do that if.
Raised, yeah.
Yeah, they have to be raised up, so they can reach. The issue with traffic is, most elderly, and I will be happy to do a traffic study, that's not a problem, that wasn't asked of me, but I can do one. One thing about a traffic study is that most elderly complexes have less number of trips than even a single-family house. So they go different times. They don't go at eight o'clock in the morning, they don't go at five o'clock or come home at five. Majority of them, probably maybe forty percent of them work, the rest of them are disabled, or whatever. So they're going to the doctor's office, or they're going somewhere at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, one o'clock, two o'clock. But they're not out there in the traffic. But again, I will be happy to do a traffic study to show what this would do for you. What we tried to do, if you could go to the back, to that other slide that shows the site plan, right there, in that area, somewhere, there it is, single-family house. Single-family house is right here. Well, that's where the planning is there. And we would not build or do anything on this lot at all, or this lot behind it. So there would be, that's all going to be green space. So our building is approximately 300 feet from the property line. So that has a very large buffer from the single-family area.
Do people stay, is that that red brick house?
Yes, I think so, yes, sir. And so, we're trying, with the help of the city planning, they allowed, we had to have a parking area right there, which we were able to eliminate because the parking in your, in the code is two units per acre, and seniors, that's just way above what's required. And I furnished y'all information about that. So we were able to move all of that, and we've always been able to get in those two pieces right there. The rest of that property will be totally green and kept that way. And if I can answer any of your questions, I'll try to.
I just have a few.
Yes, sir.
Two. Are other individuals who are not seniors permitted to reside on the property?
No, sir.
Okay. Who polices it to make sure that they're non-seniors, not, poor question, who polices that?
Right. Okay, there's three different groups. One is our management company does one, okay? That's the first line. The state is the second line. And the investor, which would be someone like Raymond James, or someone like that, that's the third line. Every person that in those units, we have to have an application, and it is verified and re-verified, and it goes through all those people.
So this is like a hotel-style development, where you walk down a hallway to get to, or are they outside?
Yes, it's more of a, it's more of a cross between assisted living, almost, where a lot more security inside with elevator.
Like Brookdale?
Yeah, kind of like, yes, sir. It has a lot like that. The rooms are much larger.
Nice.
Yeah. And it's over $10 million construction. It's the fees to the city is $700,000, something like that, for the building fee.
Did you say elevator? Because that was my concern.
Elevator, yes.
So you can walk in one section and not have to use the stairs.
Yes, it'd be elevated. Yes.
So you're going to say the property to the south is not going to be developed?
Yes. No, there will be no development on those sites.
It's just going to stay green space?
It's going to be green space, yes.
No hidden?
No nothing.
No hidden agenda?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to plant trees there, like Leland Cypress, or will you just leave it now? Right now, it's just grass, I think, right?
Yeah.
Like wheat straw, whatever.
We can plant some type of trees that would mature over time, would be better, like a hickory, or an oak, or something like that, we can get out of the landscape ordinance.
It's very unsightly right now.
Well, there's an issue there. There's a large pile of dirt that we don't own. The owner of that property owns, and he is supposed to be moving it if we get funded.
It's been there for 10 years, that big pile.
I mean, if we buy it, it's got to be gone. And so, that big, large mound has to be gone.
There's some broken machinery out there, tires.
Yes, sir. It's got to be all cleaned up.
He's responsible for taking all that away?
That dirt, he is.
Not the tires and the broken tractors?
No, we'll take all that away. In the house, we're tearing the house down, of course.
The white home.
Yes, sir. Any other questions I can have for you?
Oh, anybody got any questions? You got any question for them? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Albright?
I'm Diane Albright, and my husband and I, Dennis, own the house at 160 North Highway 113. It was my husband's parents' house, and that house has been there since 1952 or '03. We purchased it after they passed away, and we've renovated it, and our son, Stephen, and his wife and family live in the house. Our concern is that most of the developments that he's done, we went online, he has Eagles Landing in Madison, Alabama, Skyline Trace in Monroe, Georgia, and Mallard Lake in La Grange. They're all two-story. This one is three-story, which is not in, it doesn't go with the landscape of what is there. It's definitely not like Carrollton Club or Park Place. Carrollton Club is single, single-story. Park Place has balconies and patios and porches. It's pretty. These things here are ugly. And he talks about elderly, 55 and older, well, I'm 61, and I work, and I'm hoping that these people that are making $12,000 and $15,000 a year living there, that they've got some kind of job, because I can't believe that they're going to pay $600 and $700 a month in rent. That's half what they're making, what they bring home. What are they going to live on? So I think that, you know, that's not, that just seems a little high, or a little, I don't know, it just doesn't seem, doesn't seem right. And then he says the green space. The Planning Commission, when they made all the rules, or the red, whatever it's called, they said 10 units per acre. Well, they've given them a concession to 10.3. Well, who's to say in five years, when they decide that they want to build something on that green space, that the Planning Commission doesn't give another concession? So I'm just, you know, I'm worried about that, even though the green space is around our house. It might not be in a few years. It could be that, you know, that somebody else makes another concession. So I don't feel like that we're guaranteed that it's not going to impact us in one way or another down the road. We are not against having a residential, something residential there. We just don't like the three stories. We just don't like the way that it looks. I mean, if you had some townhouses, or some other things in there that would go along with the single-family housing that is all up and down 113, then I think that, you know, we would be a little more comfortable with that. And then again, the traffic, because you're going to come right out at our house. You know, you come into the right, I mean, it comes right past the house. They had talked about, you know, an acceleration lane. Well, if they do that, they're going to take half our front yard. So, you know, I just, it will impact us, whether they have that thing on those two pieces or not. I mean, it will impact us in one way or another. So that's our point.
Thank you, Ms. Albright. Well, if they want to do something with the green space, they'll have to come back in front of us.
I know, but the thing is, I mean, who's to say in five years or six years, oh, I might not be here, and, you know, be somebody else. And I, you know, I just.
I understand.
I'm not guaranteed that.
You ought to be here.
Well, I mean, I hope you're here, but you know what I mean.
Who is that?
But that's, but you understand my point?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, I'm not guaranteed that, that it's never going to be developed.
Anybody else? No, James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I'm going to reiterate basically what I said to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not opposed of a project of this type, as far as a senior housing product. I feel more based on the presentation of what I've seen and what I've read, I went on their website, it's more of an assisted living facility versus a senior housing. I have parents who would gladly downsize into a senior housing complex, but when I think of senior housing, it's those that are just wanting to get into a smaller home, more affordable, and allow them to enjoy the outdoors, indoors, indoor vacationing. I understand the low-income piece behind it, and I have had conversations with locals in the community that are heavily involved in low-income housing for senior citizens. One of the concerns they had, they stressed to me was, where are these people coming from? We do need them in Carrollton, but we can't restrict our applicants. We may see people from Douglasville, Hurd County, Harrelson County. This will not just be Carroll County or Carrollton residents applying to live in this product. So think about that impact as well. But with 102 units, the way it's designed, seventy-two percent of those are two-bedroom. So 176 potential residents in this property. Thinking again, for senior housing, why so many two-bedroom? There again, I think the facility, the product, it's a viable deal, but I don't think we need that density. That's basically my presentation. But I just ask that y'all also think be mindful of it, and of the green space. I mean, to Rory's comment, seniors still want to do things outside. I understand the safety and security, but if you don't have something outside, we all love the recreation departments and whatnot, but with transportation, where this facility is at, they're not going to have many options unless the city or somebody is going to provide public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else got any questions? Any more discussion?
Hello, my name is Stephen Albright. I live at 160 North Highway 113. I just kind of want to reiterate on some of that stuff that, like my mother said, this land has been in my family's, has been in my, with my family for, what, 50, 60, 70 years now. My grandparents built that house. I grew up in that house. I spent a lot of time playing in that front yard. And I've got two children now. I've got a 10-month-old that's going to live there for a long time. I've got a seven-year-old. And, you know, they enjoy running around, playing in the driveway, and in the front yard. And with this housing development, the impact on the traffic coming up and down 113, as you stated earlier, it's already heavy, especially with the right-in, right-out on 27. That only leaves 113 for them to come in and out of, if they've got to go back towards Carrollton. People come flying up and down 113 all day. I mean, I almost get hit almost every day, making a left into my house. People come around me in the turn lanes. Who's not to say that, you know, somebody's not going to be paying attention and come barreling through my front yard when my kid's playing in the front yard, especially with, you know, if it is the older population turning out in front of somebody. I mean, I work in fire, I'm a paramedic and a firefighter. I understand that some of the older populations can't see as well, they can't drive as well. It's just, it's just the facts. You know, 16 to 18-year-olds can't drive well, the older population can't drive well. Also, I do agree that Carrollton does need a place for a older population to live. But it, like my mother said, it needs to be what's with the area. There's nothing in the area that's three stories. The Royal Inn, or whatever it's called, right up on 27, it's not even three stories. It's two stories. And, you know, I mean, and that's a little roach motel. It's not, you're going to drive down 27 and down 113, and you're going to see all these single-story houses, and then there's just going to be this big three-story apartment complex sitting right there in the middle of everything, with all these little one-story houses around. It's just not going to look like the area that it's placed in. The ones on Park Street, they're only two stories. They've got balconies. I mean, they're beautiful, beautiful places. This place looks just like an apartment complex in Atlanta. It's just a wall with a bunch of windows. I mean, that's not very appealing to look at. If I had something to look at that every day, like Park Place, I wouldn't mind it. I'm just, and in the mornings, going back to the traffic, trying to get out, if my wife doesn't leave the house 7:10, 7:15, she might as well put the car in park, sitting in the driveway, 10 minutes to get out. Cars come in both directions. You mean, you're going to add that much more traffic to our neighborhood, trying to come in and out. I mean, like you said, 55 and older, I know plenty of people that are in their 60s, 70s that are still working. My mom's 61, she still works every day. My dad's 61, he still works every day. I work with guys at the fire department that are, that meet this 55 and up, and they're still working every day. So, I mean.
Make your point, Ms. Albright.
What?
Make your point. You're kind of running short on time.
Yeah. So, that's just pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, I would like to say, I live with senior, a lot of senior citizens, and if I had to pick the type of neighbor I could, it would be senior citizens. I'd rather live next door to senior citizens than a bunch of college students, or folks making a whole lot of noise, so.
But I think during the zoning commission, you did say something about it couldn't be in with their parents.
Couldn't? Or could?
I know that danger.
I mean, people that age shouldn't have kids, young enough to be out riding big wheels anyway.
I just want to clarify that, in the zoning, they can't have someone come visit them, but they can't live there, no.
Yeah. Spend the night, the grandkids can spend the night.
And that occurs at Park Place as well.
Yeah. There's no playground at Park Place for little kids to go play on, or anything like that, so.
Erica, isn't it limited to three days in a row? Isn't it, is it, and there's some sort of specific restriction like that?
Yes, I believe so. I think it's in the ordinance.
Five days, okay.
The only way they can live in permanent, 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 is nineteen.
More than, well, they can stay more, okay, persons under the age of 18 shall not be permitted to be permanent residents of senior housing communities. For the purposes of the section, a permanent resident shall mean any person who resides within the dwelling for more than three consecutive weeks, or has listed the residence as a dwelling for any purpose whatsoever, including but not limited to enrollment in public or private schools. So, that's basically a house guest, but it's not a resident. So, I'm not sure if their restrictions are more restrictive than that or not, but that's what our ordinance says.
Any more questions from the council?
Can I add one more comment? It does state in the zoning that after 25 years, this floating zoning can disappear. The property's not bound by that zoning. I may have read that, I may have misread that, but I just wanted to clarify that. Just want to make sure that that's what it stays for its infancy.
Covenants expire, zoning does not.
Okay.
This is our first application for it, so I have to be honest with you, I apologize.
It's okay.
Can you repeat your name again, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Here ain't no more questions. I assume y'all are ready to vote.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Table this agenda item, the rezoning request, in hopes that we can get a traffic study in relation to how we're going to address the light on 27, or lack thereof, through G dot, and also a landscaping plan that will address the green space that is right next to it. And I believe there's a way to look at restricting that green space to have anything built on it. Is it called a covenants, is that correct?
Well, the proposal is.
Well, the, the proposal is, the site plan is mine. So it would be a condition of zoning. It would be even better for that regard than a, than a restrictive covenant because they would have to come in and essentially seek a rezoning in order to change that and use it for something else.
They're also at the, at their density limit. So y'all would have to increase their allowable density if they were to do that.
Yeah. So in terms of the, uh, landscape plan and design and traffic study, I'd like to make a motion to table until we receive that. A traffic, a traffic study to see if a traffic light would be granted by G, GDOT, working with our city engineer. And then a plan to address that moving forward.
Second there.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of Mr. Wilkins? Motion? Please raise your hand. Select a motion to table. All right. Ms. Studdard, number five, special use permit request. Modular structure for religious use on point nine-two acres, four-twenty-six Person Avenue. Mr. Askew here today, tonight.
I don't see him. That's what I was just looking.
I haven't seen him yet either. That's why I was asking.
Um, the, the planning commission reviewed this request at their November meeting. And, uh, this specific request is for, um, a modular building, uh, at a religious structure. Uh, modular buildings are not currently, uh, currently permitted, uh, by right, um, in, in this zoning district. And the special use would be to allow for the placement of that modular structure for the religious activity that's already occurring on the site. The planning commission, uh, voted to approve this request with two conditions. Some of these conditions are, um, a matter of just review for the applicant, just so that they're very clear. Uh, the first one, the modular structure must be built to current building codes and inspected by a registered professional engineer in the factory where it was built. The applicant must provide a certification from the manufacturer stamped by a professional engineer licensed in the state of Georgia. That's actually just a reiteration of our existing UDO, so I don't wanna, it's probably gonna upset Chuck that we, we put it back in as a condition. But we did wanna basically make it clear to the applicant. Uh, the second one is that a store, that the stormwater management review will be conducted, um, at the time of, uh, permit issuance, to ensure that the modular structure does not contribute to runoff that collects in a ditch that straddles the northern property line. They voted unanimously to approve this nine to zero.
So anyone having questions for Erica?
I'd like to speak just to a couple of items. This is the same gentleman that asked, oh, I don't remember when, over a year ago, that we change our ordinance to accommodate this. Okay, it's been a while.
Two years it's been after me.
Oh, it's been a while, but nevertheless, the, uh, modular unit that he's got his eye on will not comply. So just so you know, I know he hasn't, I know someone's given him a, uh, a double-wide or triple-wide trailer, whatever it is, but it, it will not, I'm sorry? The health department, it will not comply with the, uh, building code.
So we're voting on, um, what are the stipulations on the codes?
Basically, you're voting to give him a special use that complies with the ordinance that was passed, whenever that was, several years ago. You're not voting on a specific structure, even though there are photographs of that structure. Oh, there's just virtually no way he can comply with the requirements on that structure. Cause if I understand it right, it says a PE had to inspect it in the factory. And obviously, we have no idea where the factory is that this thing was built in.
So all the thing we're saying is, we're voting on the fact that he can bring something in if it meets code?
That is correct.
I think the neighbor, there's a neighbor here who wants to speak. Well, I know there's a neighbor here who wants to speak.
Thank you, cause if I get behind that, you'll never see me. My only concern on it was the water that comes down off the hill. Many times, the city has had to come out because the overflow and the ditch is so narrow and the overflow is so great that it comes up onto my property and it has now washed a lot of that ditch away. My concern is, even if he gets another building, what will be done to keep my property from being washed away once he put that trailer down on that, where he wants it? Which is right next to the ditch that touches my property.
The famous ditch.
The famous ditch.
Y'all know the ditch she's talking about? There was a picture that went viral of a city employee buried in mud up to his chest.
Up to his chest.
We pulled it up here. Libby, you remember that last year or year before last?
I tried looking for it on my camera, but couldn't find it right then.
Mike, you, you know what I'm talking about, Mike, don't you? Who was that in that, who was buried all the way up to his neck? And, and I went out there and took a picture and it went viral. Who was that? What, what year was that? Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen?
They were back though last year. They were back again last year.
Maybe, maybe we need to look at doing something with that ditch too. Cause I, I thought y'all were all here.
We can look at it, but it's, uh, it's one of those existing roads. It's extremely crooked. Property lines are right on edge of the road. So we'll look and see what we can do. But I think it's probably the ongoing maintenance he's performing is gonna be the best we can do. But we'll look again and see.
Cause it's that runoff water from the church that's like flooding her property. Sort of like, uh, you know which property I'm talking about? The other one, mhm.
Yeah, at the zoning me, I guess it was the zoning meeting last month. They were saying that all of the water wasn't coming from the church, coming from the street behind. Regardless of where it's coming from, it's still coming down that hill and it hits there. And my fence has almost fell into the ditch due to so much washing away of it.
I got a question for Erica or Tim. In terms of, they're, they're looking to do this to try to bring in, I, I guess their congregation has grown, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes. They, they need it for additional religious use space, office space, basically associated, uh, with the religious use that's occurring.
Is there enough room for all the people to attend to park or are they?
Uh, the parking is currently right, basically right here. And the, I don't know that it's sanctuary space. I think it's like Sunday school space and that sort of thing. And I think that the parking is determined for a religious use by the, by the actual sanctuary space. I'd have to back and check, but, um, so I think they would still need that. Whatever's existing would be adequate.
They got tons of room there, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Very, a very small.
Thank you.
So what, what exactly are we trying to do tonight? I know we don't have the actual trailer. And I thought he, did this trailer that we're looking at, is this the trailer that came from the county that they used at the health department or something like that?
That's correct. And again, what you would be approving tonight is the, is the special use to, to install a trailer there, but it's going to be a trailer that meets building code.
But not that particular trailer that he thought?
That one will not meet.
He's gotta have the appropriate paperwork.
So we're just doing a resolution to adopt this modular structure?
It's just a special use permit.
It's a special use.
And are there other churches made? I think you may have mentioned one. There are other churches in the area that use, uh, modular structures or trailers. Like, uh, West, what is it called? West Point or something? North Point.
North Point.
Which is closed now. They got a school in the back of it, right?
North Point actually did that before the UDO revisions that disallowed modular units. Then we made the change a couple of years ago for this case to reallow modular units given a special use permit.
Anybody got any more questions?
And this is only for this particular property, not all churches. We're not saying all churches can go get a trailer and put on their property.
Correct. It's, it's basically site-specific. So if another church wanted to do it, they would have to come in and get their own special use permit.
And Ms. Yvonne, you're saying you don't want the trailer on the property?
Not if I incur any more water damage.
Right.
Yes, because it, as he can tell you and you've seen, there's so much coming down now that it affects my property. Now, he took out a lot of trees already. And once he took those trees, I, I got even more water coming down the hill. He took out about six trees and he left, I think, one standing right there where he wants to put the trailer. Now, if he comes in, take that tree out and then, I guess, grade the land so that the trailer can be placed there, what water damage am I looking at now?
That's what I was about to ask. I wonder if he's gonna do any grading in order to level? Can he grade to put a trailer in a spot in, in the city lane?
All of that would be done through plans review. And so, I mean, this particular basically request is to allow for him to move forward in that process. So through that permit review, they're gonna, they're gonna have to look at stormwater. They're gonna have to look at a grading plan. We'll look at a, the tree, if the tree qualifies as a specimen tree, then they would have to replace it with, you know, tree, two, two trees of the same, um, of the same species at a certain, uh, of, of a certain size. So there's, there's a lot that needs to be, that needs to go into the review of this. This is really just for them to be able to move forward through that permit process.
Um, would they require a retention pond?
Uh, that's gonna be Tommy's call.
So would it be, I guess, more feasible for us to continue to maintain the property and going out getting neck up in mud? Or maybe we should maybe do something about? I mean, with, whose, whose expense? Would it be his or?
Well, again, if he develops this property, and I realize this is gonna be a huge expense to him, and I don't know that the gentleman understands that, but he's gonna have to, a stormwater plan. He's gonna have to have an engineer design that. He's probably gonna need a detention pond. He's gonna have to have a grading contractor build that. They can't go out and build it with their friends who own a tractor. That's gonna have to be done in the correct way. So this is, there'll be thousands and thousands of dollars of site work just to place a modular unit there. And I'm not sure the gentleman understands that, but he would be held to that. All, all you would be doing tonight, and you, and realize staff doesn't care whether you approve it or not. We don't have a position one way or the other. But if you choose to approve it, you're just allowing it, basically from a zoning standpoint, that it could be. But that's only the start of the process. He's then gotta have it designed. He's gotta have, hire the, the right qualified contractor. And he's gotta put in the right stormwater detention measures, uh, the right kind of, you know, gravel and paving and that sort of thing, like any other developer would do.
Chuck, I, I think I already know the answer to this question, but a special use permit is site-specific. It's not ownership-specific, right? So once we approve this theoretically, he could sell it to another individual who could come in if that subsequent owner could afford all this, could use, could.
That's right. They could take advantage of this. He could take, he or she can take advantage of.
Thank you for finishing my question.
Ms. Yvonne, what do you want to see us do?
I want you, I, I want you all to help me protect my own property. I've been there for thirty-four years. And my mom, my mom and I lived there for thirty-four years until her passing. I want my property to be protected regardless of who come in. If somebody come in who can afford to do it, whoever comes in and do it, I just don't want them to just do something and I catch a bill because I can't afford to fix it myself.
Any more questions? Anybody wanna make a motion or be in shape for a fashion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move right now that we approve the, um, item number four, the special use permit request for modular structure for religious use on point nine-two, two acres, uh, from the applicant, uh, Pastor Askew at four-twenty-six Person Avenue, under the conditions that he hire an engineer to complete the stormwater, uh, management systems as recommended by the city of Carrollton and our engineers.
And other stipulations go along with it?
I'm sorry?
And other stipulations about the building?
And the other stipulations aforementioned, Chuck, that's one of your words, right? Uh, about the building.
I, I think it's encompassed in what the planning commission recommended. So I think.
That's all encompassed.
So I think you, the motion could be simply to adopt or accept the planning commission's recommendation.
I move we also, in addition to what I just said, uh, adopt the planning commission's accommodations and recommendations as mentioned by our city attorney. Was that good?
I have a motion. Have a second, Mr. Waters. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Go on post.
I just want the minutes to reflect that it's not the recommendations by the city attorneys. The recommendations by the, um.
P and Z.
P and Z, yeah. Thank you. I, I know you, I'm not trying to correct you.
That's okay.
I just want the minute.
You got that, Libby, then. Okay, good.
Item number six, public hearing is.
Cause we've had problems where we've read the minutes and they don't seem to be consistent with what's actually adopted. That's the purpose of it.
That. Public hearing consideration resolution thirteen dash two-one-seven occupational tax ordinance proposed amendment. Mr. Chuck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City staff has spent a fair amount of time, Marty and, and Erica, looking at our occupational taxes. And they discovered that, um, you probably already know this, but the way our occupational tax ordinance works is that businesses are grouped together by type. And then the amount of tax that they pay, or at least the tax rate that they pay, uh, is by business type in those groups. And, and what they discovered is that in certain groups, there are businesses that are paying a disproportionate amount of occupational tax compared to other businesses in the same type. And so they started looking at the issue and they discovered that our occupational tax ordinance was, was adopted back in nineteen ninety-four in September. About three months later, there was an amendment, um, to cap the annual increase in occupational tax that was tied to the accumulated increase of the Consumer Price Index benchmark in nineteen seventy-eight. The problem is that for some reason, when, um, and that's what was approved by the mayor and council in ninety-four, what actually got codified into our code by Muni Code reads different than that. And the cap that's in the codification of the ordinance, uh, speaks in terms of annual increase, capped by the annual increase in the CPI for that year. So we, we've got a problem in what was adopted twenty-three years ago by the mayor and council is not necessarily what's reflected in our code. The other thing is, the way the current cap is written, it results in the problem that they discovered in going through this process is that you've got similarly, similar businesses that should be paying the same tax rate or at least the similar tax amount. And in, in certain cases, there's a vast discrepancy in the amount of tax that they're paying. So, long story short, the staff has recommended that we simply eliminate the cap so that all businesses within a similar category are paying the same tax rate, um, moving forward. And it accomplishes two things. One, it cleans up what should be reflected in our ordinance. Uh, and two, does away with that disparity in terms of the amount of taxes that in certain cases similar businesses are taking. So what is reflected in resolution thirteen dash two thousand seventeen is simply to eliminate the cap that exists in the ordinance.
Any discussion or questions rather? Chuck, I got one. Is this, um, there's, I wanna say some folks were grandfathered in over the years, or is that?
We have used the term grandfathering, but it's not really a grandfather. It, it's really an, a cap. Grandfathering suggests that there is a, a use of property that has become essentially unlawful due to a change in the law, but it nevertheless gets to continue in existence because it predated the ordinance. Here, what we're talking about is, is a cap that applies. It applies to everybody. But it disfavors newer businesses. But it disfavors newer businesses, even though they're in the same category as older businesses. Because of the existence of the cap, they can wind up paying more in occupational taxes, even though, for example, their gross profits, which is what the tax is calculated on, may be less. So they may be making less money, but paying more in taxes simply because they're a newer business than, say, a business that, that has been existing in a while that's, that's having greater gross profits.
You're saying gross profits, and I've heard gross sales. Which, are we voting on gross profits, or are we voting on gross sales?
No, that, well, there, I'm sorry, did I say gross revenue is actually the term? And so that's used for grouping, the businesses are grouped by gross revenue, and then the taxes applied to the gross revenue. But the tax rate is determined by the grouping that they're in.
I've gotten a lot of calls from other car dealers and used car dealer guys in town. I'm just trying to understand. Anybody got any questions? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. Then a motion. Anybody wanna make a motion to a...
Move.
Yeah. Go ahead, Gerald.
Oh, we need to make a vocal motion other than... What number are we on again now?
Number six.
Oh, number six. I move we adopt the occupation tax ordinance as proposed before us tonight. That's resolution thirteen dash two thousand seventeen.
Have a motion and a second. Assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of adopting resolution fourteen dash, oop, thirteen dash two one seven, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Resolution fourteen dash two one seven. Recreational Trail Program grant application.
Attached in your, in your agenda items is a resolution to approve an application for the recreational trails program from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. This application process will occur actually in two thousand eighteen. The deadline for the application is in January of two thousand and eighteen. The city is intending to request grant funding in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for funding for a Carrollton Greenbelt spur coming from the south side that would connect Southwire and Tanner into downtown, where it would basically stub out kind of across the street from the depot. I'm available if you have any questions.
So it says here that this, we've, the grant funds for the Alabama Street Trailhead, that was the, that was the one that we voted in, what, two months ago for the boat launch area, is that correct?
Yes, so the Alabama Street Trailhead was the last RTP grant that we have utilized. We also used one for the Lake Carroll Trailhead. That was also RTP funding. They have, they have since increased the amount of funding that they give. They've gone from one hundred thousand dollars per grant cycle to two hundred thousand dollars per grant cycle. The city would be required to contribute if awarded two hundred thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars in funding, some of that can be done through in-kind.
And the, how was the decision to make that area of town for this grant application? Versus, since I know in our last meeting about infrastructure projects, we hadn't actually kind of chosen what area we wanted to go to next as a spur? What was the decision behind the Tanner area?
Correct. The two spurs that I think we've discussed the most would be the Rome Street spur coming south from where it ends at William Street, and then this particular spur that cuts through Tanner's Park. George Department of Natural Resources, they're very aware and cognizant of the types of trails that are going in. If you recall, the Rome Street path really functions more like a side path. Although we view it as a, as a path, they really view it more as a widened sidewalk. This one would be cutting through some park space. And it would probably score higher, because the other they're going to view basically as a widened sidewalk, and they do not fund sidewalks. And I was concerned that we would get basically dinged on that.
This is going through the Tanner owned property, but up their park?
Mm-hmm.
What is, what is their, do we know their current plan for connecting their campus into, into the community?
So not part of this application, but related to this application currently, as I understand it, I don't wanna speak for them, but as I understand their plan for the Dixie Street, construction for the help, the Tanner Health Pavilion, they are actually gonna build the portion of the spur in front of Dixie Street, which helps us because, back to, it looks more like a side path and not a trail. And then we would then use this funding to connect that piece over into downtown. So that particular piece would, and that will actually help us on our application because it shows some, some private investment beyond, you know, just support.
I'm all for connecting businesses into town, and it looks like impact to the city will be largely minimal with this sort of an application. Is there another section between the Tanner campus and this piece, or between this piece and the downtown area that will be needed to finish that section out?
This section will, will actually probably, based off of the preliminary cost estimates, cost more than what we're, we're requesting. This is just the maximum amount that we can request. So it will be, there will be more city participation than fifty thousand dollars as we've reviewed the preliminary cost estimates, just based off of linear square feet and that sort of thing.
When would this expire? Would we have to match that immediately, or once we, say we get the, the grant, what would there be a timeframe to use that money?
They would award the, what they would do is, they would award governments, local governments, the ones that, that make it through. They actually call this a pre-application. It's not even their bona fide application to move forward. They usually do that in the spring, and then from there, we would go forward with the, with the full application. Typically, they're gonna give funding as long as we meet the requirements and that sort of thing. But, you know, you're looking at probably twelve months at least before you're gonna see any dirt moving. The Alabama Street one was a little unique. That was actually funded for a separate location. We wound up having to move it because of some other development efforts on the part of someone outside of the city. And so that money, it took us a little bit longer to spend, the Alabama Street money, just because it was really, it was really on us. We had to relocate the spur that we wanted to build.
How's that one coming along?
They are finally grading for the parking lot. I'm not sure if you noticed it. I was out there last week, and I don't think they, they didn't, they haven't started pouring anything, have they? No, they, it's, it's looking great. I mean, it's, what we did was we went in and, and cleared, not cleared, but we thinned some of the invasives that were between the trail and the parking lot, so we cleared it out so you, to provide visibility for the trail, which I think has helped immensely. It's been used as a de facto parking lot for the trail since then. I always see cars parked out there, because folks park there. But this is, we're wrapping it up very quickly. So I would think within the end of the month, we would have...
I just wanna say this, we love these RTP grants. They're real easy to use, the bidding process is real simple, and again, our commitment is twenty percent. This would not build this full spur from Dixie Street, but what we would do is use what's there. And once it's expended, then you can decide whether you wanna build the rest, whether you wanna build the rest three years from now, whatever you'd wanna do. So this does not obligate you to build that entire spur. It just obligates you to put fifty thousand with their two hundred and build two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of spur.
This may be a stupid question. Is this the farmer's market as well?
We'll be working with Tanner on the exact location. You know, the farmer's market ultimately will move over to the Health Pavilion, I believe, that's the plan, once they build it. But yeah, it would get, be adjacent to where they are located currently. So, one thing that we're just trying to do is just leverage the money that we're spending, local dollars with, you know, state and federal money as much as we can. And these are, Tim's right, these are actually easy, not easy grants, but grants that are easier to maneuver than some others.
Have a motion, will you, adopt? Have a motion, and have a second.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Tony Richardson, vehicle bids, water filter plant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eight on the agenda tonight is for the purchase of a vehicle for the water treatment plant. It is in the current budget for this purchase. It'd be replacing a vehicle that has in excess of one hundred and seventy-five thousand miles, and it has mechanical issues at this time. We requested pricing from our local bidders, received those, and then we also compare them to the state bid list. State bid list price of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars was the low bid. If you choose to purchase local, the lowest price locally came from Walker GMC at a cost of seven hundred and eighty-one dollars above state bid list price. Scott Evans is a Dodge place just outside of town, but they also own the Nissan place that is in town. The lowest one, lowest bid we received locally was, was Walker. They were lower than the Scott Evans bid.
It's Pug Myer, that's here, isn't it? Next to Chick-fil-A, right? I like the idea of staying local, and I like Walker's price. So I move, if I may, that we, uh, let me see what this purchase is for again, so I can see it. I move we purchase the water filter plant truck, I guess I'm saying that correctly. It's a half-ton four-wheel-drive pickup truck at the price of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars, which is the lowest local bid from Walker GMC.
Have a motion and a second. I'm going to recuse myself on this bid because of a longstanding friendship with Mr. Walker. Just because. All in favor of adopting the bid from Walker GMC, please raise your hand. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Tony, still up?
Tony, before you go forward, I have a typo on the memo I sent y'all for the next item. I carried that same paragraph over to this memo, and I had the flu that week when I wrote that, so that's my excuse.
This next item is also a vehicle purchase for the facilities maintenance department. This will be a three-quarter ton four-wheel-drive truck with a service body to be used by our electrician. We also requested bids from local dealers on this truck and compared them to the state bid list. State bid list price was thirty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars. And the local bids, the lowest one came from Scott Evans Dodge, and it's one thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars more than the state bid list price. So if you choose to purchase local, they would be the lowest bidder.
I move that we adopt, um, excuse me, I move that we permit the city to purchase three-fourth ton four-wheel-drive service bed truck from Scott Evans Dodge for the contract price of thirty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Have a motion and a second. Any more questions? I have one. Is this gas or diesel?
It'd be gas, and it's replacing a twenty-year-old vehicle with excess over a hundred thousand. We don't really know how many.
Good enough. Think about things like hybrid, engines, motors, more aggressive type.
For this vehicle, this is also used in emergency response situations from our maintenance department to respond to our facilities that, you know, all hours of the night. So I think if you're, if you're talking electric, I think you run a chance of it not being charged when you need it to go. As far as alternative fuels, we can certainly look into that in the future. We haven't because it's gonna increase the price and we go with a little...
Maybe not alternative fuels, but you know, like how a Prius turns off at the light and, you know, when you stop, the engine stops running. I think that would be a hybrid vehicle, right?
Yes, and I think they're more common, maybe in administrative vehicles and not so much service vehicles. But I can certainly check into that in the future.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Adopt Scott Evans Dodge, is that right? Motion carries five to zero. Tim, two thousand eighteen mayor council meeting schedule.
It's the time of year again to set your meeting dates. There are five, I'm sorry, yeah, there are five meeting dates that would normally be the first Monday of the month that need to move. January first to January eighth, because January first is obviously the New Year's holiday. From January fifth to the twelfth, there is the father-daughter dance that night. And that, oh, I know that Mitt would like to, to be able to be at this council meeting and also enjoy that with his daughter. April second changed to April ninth because that's the spring break for city schools. July second changed to July ninth because that's Fourth of July week, and September third changed to September tenth because that's Labor Day. But we like to set this ahead of time so that you don't have to vote to change that as the year goes by, and that the public knows what our meeting schedule will be.
Have a motion, we adopt? Have a motion, have a second. Have a second. Any more discussion?
All here for where he'll take his daughter to the father's day of the dance. Will I approve this?
Good enough. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Ms. Stutter, board appointment, planning commission.
You have three planning commissioners whose terms expire at the end of this year. Beau Bass was appointed in April of two thousand seventeen, so that's this year, to fill an unexpired term. That term that he filled actually expires at the end of this year. Scott Duncan was appointed in April of two thousand eleven to fill in an unexpired term and has since completed two full terms. Kira Herzog was appointed in April two thousand twelve to fill an unexpired term and has since completed one full term. All three of these planning commissioners are assets to the planning commission, and they have good attendance. And staff recommends reappointing each of them to a new three-year term unless you would choose otherwise.
There was, I think, a desire on the part of Mayor Protim Bird to consider Dr. Belega for one of these slots. Obviously, he's a friend of this council, our next council member. All three of these commissioners are great commissioners. If you were to decide to place Dr. Belega on in lieu of one of these, we would recommend Scott Duncan, only because he lives outside the city. And really, it would be a tough call, but Beau Bass was just appointed, so we would hate to bump him back off.
He's also served the longest.
Yep, yes, Scott has served the longest. Again, that's not a negative on Scott. It's just, that's a tough decision to make. But if, if you're going to make that decision, that would be our recommendation.
All right.
I actually received two phone calls about Dr. Belega's candidacy on the, on the P and Z, but, uh...
I'll make a motion that we adopt all three except for Scott and plug in Mr. Belega.
Second then?
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I'm putting Beau Bass, Peter Belega, and Kira Herzog on the, back on the planning commission. Please raise your hand. All opposed? Three to two. Board appointment, Main Street Board.
There are three directors whose terms expire on December thirty, thirty-first on the Carrollton Main Street Board of Directors. Brett Baxley, Dorothy Pittman, and Pam Almond are all retailers in downtown Carrollton and have been active board members. The Main Street Board met, and they recommend the following individuals to replace these outgoing board members. Adam DeCure is the owner of Adams and Sons, which is a home decor retail store located on Adamson Square next to Corner Cafe. James Schiller is the owner of Schiller Productions. He's a video, medium, and marketing firm. And then Lauren Yates is a Realtor with Metro West Realty.
Does Miss Yates live in the city limits?
I don't think that's a qualification with the, with the Main Street Board. I don't think that's a qualification with the, with the Main Street Board, but I'm not aware. I don't think she does.
Okay, thank you.
And she doesn't own any stores up on...
No, she's not a merchant. She's, Realtor is one of the, kind of the professionals that are desirable for the Main Street Board and it's actually in the bylaw. So, that's why she was, she was nominated.
I will make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we elect the current slate that's set forth on this memory and date, November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, for the Main Street Board of Directors.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Number thirteen, board appointment, corridor development and beautification committee.
As you recall, when you adopted the resolution establishing the Carrollton Corridor Development Beautification Committee, the committee members' terms were staggered into one, two, and three year terms so as to not have all committee members roll off at the same time. There are four committee members whose terms have expired and they are as follows. David Godwin, city school board member and senior vice president at Bank South Mortgage. Christina Davis, senior project manager at Columbia Residential, which is a regional mixed-use and multifamily development company. Sandra Houston, who serves as the planning commission representative. She's also an associate broker at Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, Georgia. And then Luke Wojcik is a civil engineer with Georgia and West, Inc. All four members have agreed to continue to serve and they have absolutely been assets to this committee. I feel like we're just kind of getting started, but we, we have made great strides, I think, in, in the work that we've done on Bankhead and all four have been very participatory in that. And they have good attendance at the meetings.
Any discussion? I can make a motion, we adopt appointments from the, from the board of David Godwin, Christina Davis, Sandra Houston, Luke Wojcik. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. And I do hereby declare, this meeting is over.